Okay, if we can all settle and call this meeting to order, please. Welcome to the regular board meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board, Tuesday, January 20th. If we can have an opening prayer, please, and call this meeting to order. Joel Luzato, please.
Thank you. Now, with the secondary students having their exams this coming week, I thought it would be nice to say a prayer about stress. So if you'll all join me, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Father, when I feel crushed by my own worries, lift my mind and help me to seek the truth. When fear grips me tight and I cannot move, free my heart and help me to take things one step at a time. When I can't express the turmoil inside, calm me with your quiet words of love. I choose to trust in you each day, each hour, each moment of my life. I know deep down that I can cast these cares on you, that you have taken these anxious thoughts, and by dying on the cross, you have set me free. I choose to trust in you each day, each hour, each moment of my life. I know that, deep down, I live in your grace, forgiven, restored by your sacrifice. You have set me free. Amen. We offer up our prayers this evening for the deceased members of our extended Halton Catholic system. Teresa Ann Palmer, mother of Marge Warmwells, principal at Holy Cross Catholic Elementary School. Mario Antonio Vaca, father of John Vaca, secondary teacher at John Vanier Catholic Secondary School in Milton, and father-in-law of Cindy Vaca, occasional secondary teacher. We ask this through Christ our Lord, amen.
Thank you, Joel. If we can have Vice Chair Antamasi, the motion is adopted in camera, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For acting elementary vice principal, we have Jim Rolls, appointed as acting elementary vice principal at St. Andrews Elementary School, effective January 9th, 2015, for approximately one month. We also have Michael Yanetta, appointed as acting secondary vice principal at Loyola Secondary School, effective February 18th, for approximately three months. Thank you.
Thank you. And if we could all have a motion to approve the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions from the agenda? Seeing none, mover, Trustee Quinn, second, Trustee Marai, all in favor? Thank you. Any declarations of conflict of interest? Seeing none. We have no presentations, we have no delegations. We do have two sets of minutes to approve this evening, though. The inaugural board meeting of December 2nd, if we could have a mover for those minutes, please. Trustee Antamasi, seconded by Trustee Rowe, all in favor? Thank you. And from our regular board meeting, January 6th, have a mover for those minutes, please. Trustee Quinn, oh, question, sorry.
I'd like to amend the minutes in section 10.6 and remove the last sentence of 10.6. I'd like to put that forward as a motion, please.
What is it that you would like to do?
I'd like to strike that last sentence.
Any objections, comments?
Could you read the last sentence, please, Madam Chair?
Certainly. "The Director acknowledged that Catholic students are in a disadvantaged position with respect to the current exemption practice as stated in the Education Act." Yes? Sorry, Trustee Baron.
Just quickly, why?
I don't think that statement reflected the views of the Director, and I think she was put on the spot to say that, and I don't agree that that was the intention of her statement.
Trustee Rubenda.
From the Director? It should be coming directly from Paula.
Director Dawson.
Thank you to you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the comments from Trustee Quinn, and I would agree that perhaps I was put on the spot with the questioning at that point, but I wanted the minutes to reflect what was said, so I presented the minutes to the board in this fashion.
All right, so I'd like a mover for the minutes as amended, please. Trustee Antamasi, seconded by Trustee Rowe, all in favor? Thank you. Business arising from previous meetings? I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry. The regular board meeting? Yeah, I thought we just did now, as amended and seconded, yeah, okay. I'm sorry, the business arising from the previous meeting? Any questions? Yes, we have that later on in the agenda. Action items. Super Nintendo McMahon Employee Computer Equipment Purchase Plan Borrowing Bylaw.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a report we bring forward at this time every year. The take-up by our employees in this program has effectively doubled over what it was in the previous year. What we do is we arrange for a loan from the, a low-interest rate loan from the bank for the amount stated in the report, and then we kind of check back to the employee for the purchase they made, and we make equal deductions, principal and interest, from their pays over a 24-month period, so. And myself or Roxanna would be happy to answer any questions trustees may have.
Trustee Quinn.
Through you, Madam Chair. I went through a number of past policies of similar nature, and they varied from the low thousands to up to a half million dollars. I'm wondering if we've had any defaults on those payments over the term?
Through you, Madam Chair. No, we do not, because we deduct it from the employee's pay, and Roxanna, I don't know if people left before the two years, we would get the money from them, that's happened before, too. This particular one, we've never defaulted, and that's where we get a separate line, through you, Madam Chair, for just the computer loan with employees, so.
Yes?
Through you, Madam Chair. Is this equipment that's related to their teaching?
Through you, Madam Chair. This is personal equipment that they can use at home. Wayne, maybe you can help me out. Sorry, Wayne Elshoff is back here, our senior administrator, IT Services, and just to further, all of these purchases are vetted through Wayne, so we don't have any colored TVs or other non, how would I say it, Wayne, non-computer equipment-related purchases, so maybe you can help us out here, Wayne.
Through you, Madam Chair, absolutely. So, we take a look at every purchase, and it has to align with what we're using in the schools, and, you know, we really haven't had anybody try to go outside of that, so it's technology that's aligned with what we're already buying.
Trustee Trace?
Through you, Madam Chair. That's precisely what we extend the employees to, 2.8, so we recoup everything from the employee. Remember that, 2.8% is a loan over two years, so it's not a credit line, it's a loan, so when, in two years, when we've collected all those payments from the employees, this loan is paid off.
Any other questions? Trace?
Certainly, Madam Chair, through you. If an employee, as the report indicates, could make a purchase up to $3,000, so rather than have to pay $3,000 in one lump sum, it spreads that, the pain, if you will, of that, over a two-year period. We help them with that.
Trustee Marai.
Has the amount ever changed? Because obviously, in 1997, technology cost significantly more than what you can get today, so I'm just wondering if there's been any changes to that, and I guess I comment on, is, well, I guess, clearly, the demand is still there with 65 employees participating. Do you expect the demand will continue?
Through you, Madam Chair, yes, we do. In fact, as I mentioned, this is twice the uptake we had last year. It's been in the $50,000, $60,000 range, in my recollection. Wayne, I don't know if you know, if we've increased that number, my only comment on it would be is we haven't really had to, because what you could buy with $3,000, and I know that from my own purchases in this regard, what you get for $3,000 in 1997, or '99, whenever you want to pick, you could, you can get for half that, you can get a lot more, maybe I'm not explaining it well, you get a lot more power, computer, RAM, storage space than you could then, so the prices have come down for more powerful technology.
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, that's absolutely right. We've tried to keep the amount such that people could buy even a more expensive, the Apple computers are typically more expensive, and also buy some peripherals with it, and perhaps some software, so we think that number that we have is pretty good.
Okay. A motion to resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board approved the Borrowing Bylaw, number 2015 F01, in an amount not to exceed $96,000 to finance the Employee Computer Equipment Purchase Plan, as approved by Resolution 305/99. Moved by Trustee Quinn, seconded by Trustee Rowe, all in favor? So moved. The next action report is Policy 227, Student Behavior JK to 12, and that report is submitted by Paul Marai.
So, I just wanted to present this to the board. It was discussed and voted on at the policy meeting, so you have the action item before you.
Questions? Resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee to rescind Policy 2-27, Student Behavior JK to 12. Have a mover, please. Trustee Antamasi, seconder, Trustee Carabella, all in favor? No. Question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Under our pupil behavior, on the second page, we've got the word, the sentence word, ensure, B. The principal shall, at the beginning of each school year, issue board policy directives to the students, to the teachers, that will ensure the maintenance of proper class behavior. I don't know of any principal that can ensure the proper maintenance of class behavior. We've had this discussion over the word ensure many times, over different issues, and we've always had to modify the word, because we can't ensure anything. And so I wonder if leaving in such a way really gives up the potential of facing some sort of legal action. If the principal is unable to ensure the progress of behavior, it's possible that something happens in school. So I'd like to have that word changed.
Do you have an alternate word?
Well, it's fine to ensure, well, it's meant to ensure, but only the good Lord can ensure.
Question?
Are we not moving to rescind this, rather than approve it? This is a motion to rescind this policy, and it's been updated in the next policy we're going to approve.
Yes, you're right. I apologize. So I apologize. I'm just on the wording here.
Yes.
So I'll withdraw the comment.
All right, so did we have a mover? Yes, Trustee Quinn, seconder. Trustee Carabella, all in favor of rescinding? Yes, thank you. And Policy 2-39, Progressive Discipline and Safety in Schools, report submitted by Paul Marai.
Once again, this was discussed to replace, this is on a, I guess, a regular working schedule, that's presented to us by staff, to make sure that we are in line with ministry guidelines as well, so I present this to the board.
Resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and approve Policy 2-39, Progressive Discipline and Safety in Schools as amended. May I have a mover? Trustee Antamasi, seconder, Trustee Quinn, all in favor? Thank you. The OCSTA AGM resolution submission, Hydro Utilities Increase, Director Dawson?
Thank you to you, Madam Chair. At a previous board meeting, this was brought up, and trustees were asked to present any motions that we could give to the OCSTA executive for their annual general meeting, and at the time, this resolution to petition Ontario Hydro was presented, and I would submit it for trustee's consideration.
Trustee Quinn.
In reading the motion, I was concerned that when the Ontario government has a $10.5 billion deficit in 2014, and a $277 billion debt, that if we're asking the province to either increase transfers to us, or decrease our hydro bills, that they may do so by asking us to close schools, or find other efficiencies on our own end first, so my recommendation would be that we don't submit such a resolution.
Anyone else have a question, comment? Trustee Marai?
I think that, to Trustee Quinn's point, I think it, this looks at the fact that the funding model presented by the province, two boards, is kind of broken, and it's not really in line with all of the things they're doing in Ontario that are affecting a cost to arms-length organizations, crown corporations, and school boards and hospitals. I think this just recognizes that that needs to be fixed, and it shouldn't start with us having to close schools, or to affect performance of our programs, it should begin with them recognizing that they're passing on costs to us and to ratepayers here.
Trustee Antamasi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for a little bit of clarification, once this is approved, it goes to OCSTA. OCSTA, the membership then votes on it, so we don't know whether this will actually move forward beyond their meeting or not. All the boards are suffering because of this, but whether it's, you know, whether it's approved to move forward or not, and even if it's approved to move forward, it doesn't necessarily mean that the government or the hydro is going to act on anything, it's just to bring awareness to the issue.
And the AGM is in April, correct? Yes. Any other questions? Do we have a mover for this? Antamasi, seconder, Trustee Rubenda, all in favor? One, two, three, four. It's not, we don't have enough to pass. Put the motion to scale. Strategic Planning Process Framework, Director Dawson.
Thank you to you, Madam Chair. Strategic planning is a key responsibility of the members of our school board, and the Education Act requires boards to have a multi-year strategic plan that's directed at achieving the board's goals for student achievement and well-being, a positive school climate, effective stewardship of the board's resources, and the delivery of effective and appropriate educational plans, programs. The strategic plan describes what our board hopes to achieve, and what its priorities are, and how it plans to meet those objectives. And the strategic planning process outlined in Action Report 8.5 is a substantial organizational commitment, and it's an essential tool to provide an overarching rationale and purpose to guide the direction and the decisions of the Board of Trustees, the Director, and the staff, and the discharge of the duties and responsibilities. So using a focused strategic planning framework will assist the Board of Trustees in leading the direction for Catholic education in the Halton region. Recommendations are before the board in order to begin the strategic planning process framework. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Questions? Trustee Quinn.
Through you, Madam Chair. As a director, to, once again, I note that the first item in the proposed motion is the request to start the RFP process, looking for the external facilitator you mentioned in the meeting last week. I would like to amend this motion and remove section A, and when we are further through the process, come to agreement as to the need of a facilitator later in the process, rather than right at the very beginning, once we've established a few of the first phases in your plan.
Trustee Rubenda.
The strategic plan is incredibly complex, and it's very easy to get off track, and so I think that you really need to have someone who is able to lead a group, and keep the group along the intended path, and I think to bring out a facilitator in later is a little bit behind. I really think it has to be done ahead of time.
Trustee Danko.
Point of order, Madam Chair. I believe Trustee Quinn made a motion to amend, which needs to be seconded, before there can be any debate on the amendment.
Is that correct? Okay. I'm sorry, I need a seconder for that, for discussion. Thank you. All in favor? Further discussion? Do you?
Point of order, Madam Chair. Now you can discuss the amendment before a vote.
Further discussion, even though we already started it? Okay.
Basically, the normal process is to begin with a facilitator, and that facilitator will take us through each one of the other stages. To start it and then go back and get a facilitator will make it much more complex, so I cannot put that into my mind.
Trustee Marai, did you have something?
I just want a clarification on the amendment, like, what's the exact wording of it?
Trustee Quinn.
The amendment is to remove letter A from the motion.
I don't think that's clear with, it says identify who will facilitate the process, and then you're taking out A, or taking out of the resolution, sorry. Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Trustee Danko.
Madam Chair, I support the amendment proposed by Trustee Quinn. I believe that the, you're putting the cart before the horse, I mean, I believe that the, first of all, the plan, the spirit of the plan and the steps above, and under Phase 1, determine whether a third-party facilitator would be beneficial, and we haven't even debated that. I guess we are now, by virtue of the amendment, so I think that, first of all, a committee needs to be struck, and that committee should debate the specifics of the next steps. I think the first step is to strike a committee, and then that committee can begin to do its work. So I support the amendment to remove item A from the resolution, and I can support B, C, and D proceeding now. I would have preferred just the committee to be struck, but I can support B, C, and D. Therefore, I support the amendment motion.
Trustee Rowe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We, our school board has a lot of people working for us, and we don't have, however, anyone extra who doesn't have responsibilities, and this, as Madam, as Trustee Rubenda said, is a very important process that trustees are responsible for, and I think we need somebody who's dedicated to making sure that this process moves smoothly, and if not, then, you know, the committee that Trustee Danko is speaking about should, would involve meeting with all the trustees at several times during the many evenings, or afternoons, as long as he's committed to that, then that's a burden that would be involved with that. So I think that we should proceed with section A.
Further? Trustee Carabella.
What is the timeframe for question A? Like, how long does it take to get? If the plan approved and?
Trustee Dawson.
Through you, Madam Chair. Usually, to put an RFP together, would take probably a meeting of the chair, the vice chair, a trustee on the committee, so that we can word an RFP out to potential facilitators, and there are many, and you heard one at the Oxta Conference, that could apply, that their resumes, so to speak, in applying for this position to facilitate a strategic plan, would not just be about cost, but it would also be about the quality of reports, and how they can facilitate trustees through this process in setting the direction. So it's not just about money, it's about the quality of the skills, and the tools, and the resources that a facilitator could bring to the table. That, usually, we can put that RFP together in probably a couple of hours, and then it would go out to the broader educational community for people to respond. Perhaps a week, two weeks at the most.
Trustee Antamasi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm in favor of moving ahead with the facilitator, because we have been through the process before, and we actually had two facilitators, and the first one was not, really perhaps wasn't a good fit for us. The second facilitator, I feel, was a good fit, and I think if we can find someone who's a good fit, it helps the whole, it helps each individual come together, I think, as a collective, whereas when you're just, when you're trying to do it yourself, or have someone who does not do this on a full-time basis, you're lacking in the qualities and the direction that you could have, that you would benefit certainly from someone who, like several of us did see at OCSTA, where you're having sometimes someone who's come from different backgrounds, it's not simply education, but they have the benefit of other associations and other Catholic organizations that could benefit us in moving forward.
Trustee Danko.
Madam Chair, through you, that's an excellent point raised by Trustee Antamasi, and further supports the reason why we should omit item A from tonight's resolution, because if we don't omit item A, trustees will not have a chance to determine who is a good fit. It'll proceed, the process of selection will proceed without us, and we should be involved in that process.
Trustee Marai.
I'm sorry, I just need a bit more clarification on item A, because I'm reading this, "To determine whether a third-party facilitator would be beneficial for any or all components of strategic planning and engage if necessary." So, like, I don't know if it would be a good idea or not, but I think it may benefit all of us to have more information on what they would actually provide, and the specific costs, and if we all decide at the end of the day, I think there could be good reasons either way, but maybe it's best if we get more information, which I think that's what A is saying. Could we clarify?
Trustee Danko.
Madam Chair, through you, to Trustee Marai, item A on the recommendation below, not item A of Phase 1, that is the, we're under the resolved statement, item A there is the statement that's being asked, we're amending, that the proposed amendment would remove, but that would contradict the spirit of Phase 1, where it says that, where the framework says under Phase 1, A there, that A says, "Determine whether a third-party facilitator" would be. And if we strike, if we vote to have an RFP, we will not be debating that part of the plan, and I think the committee, once it's struck, should be debating that and handling that process.
Trustee Quinn.
As to part C of this recommendation, the resolution, I'd further like to amend C to state that establish a strategic plan committee comprised of all interested trustees.
Point of order.
A point of order, Madam Chair. We're still debating the First Amendment, we can't introduce another amendment while one amendment's being debated.
But I'd like to call for a vote, or do you do that, Madam Chair?
Well, I have to see if there's further discussion on that amendment. Trustee Marai?
And I just want to, but I want to be clear, so is Trustee Quinn's intention for a portion of the strategic plan, is it to strike a portion of the strategic planning process can be managed by internal, it's the actual paragraph in the recommended steps, not A in the Phase 1? Is that correct? Okay.
If there's no further discussion, if we can vote on the amendment to the motion? All those in favor of the amendment, amended motion? All those opposed? The amendment fails. So if we may move on, if we have a motion for the resolution that we do initiate A, a request for proposal RFP, B, we plan and provide an introductory briefing session, C, we establish a strategic plan committee comprised of trustees and key staff members, and D, a projected six to eight-month timeline for completion of the 2015 strategic planning and renewal process. Trustee Quinn.
Through you, Madam Chair. I'd like to propose amendment to item C and it state, establish a strategic plan committee comprised of all interested trustees and key staff members who will serve as a resource to the committee and support the work to be undertaken so that any one, any one of us interested in being involved in the process will be involved in the process.
So you want to add the word interested? All interested. Any discussion? Can we have a mover for the amendment for the addition of seconded by Arlene Ian Tomasi? And we'll have a vote on that motion, please? All in favor? Or do we want discussion? Does anybody want to ask a question here? Trustee Danko.
Madam Chair, thank you, through you. What is the, how will public participation be incorporated into this plan?
Director Dawson.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. In phase three, after we have collected and analyzed the data that the strategic plan committee has decided we need some more information on, that will help determine the, the questions that trustees wish to go out to stakeholders and get more information on. In a town hall format.
Questions or comments? Trustee Carabella.
Well, my question is still for the A, but it's not finished. Okay. Thank you.
Seeing none? All right. So now we are voting on the resolution with the amendment, I'm sorry, on the amendment for C. Is there any further discussion? So we're going to vote on that move to accept the amendment in C. Yes?
Madam Chair, if you just restate the amendment, please.
Certainly. Establish a strategic plan committee comprised of all interested trustees and key staff members who will serve as resources to the committee and support the work to be undertaken. Yes, all in favor? Passed. All right. Now may we have a mover for the resolution, the motion as amended? Trustee Ian Tomasi, seconded by trustee Rowe. Any discussion? All in favor? I'm sorry, can you do it one more time? Raise your hands? So questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry. What exactly are we voting on again?
We're voting, resolving that the motion that the HCDSP approved the following next steps in the strategic planning process framework with C being amended to all interested trustees. Everything else remains the same. Yes? All in favor? And it passes. Eight point six, appointment of special education advisory committee member, Superintendent Brown.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. The purpose of this report is to present a recommendation to the board regarding the membership in the Special Education Advisory Committee, or SEAC. As you know, SEAC is comprised of members of parents, local parent organizations, uh, who make recommendations to the board for members who represent them at the table as voting members of SEAC and also as alternates. At the January 12th, 2015 meeting, uh, SEAC accepted the nomination of Laura Thompson as an alternate representative from the Learning Disabilities Association of Halton onto the board's Special Education Advisory Committee. So SEAC has asked that, uh, the following recommendation be submitted to the board of trustees for consideration. The resolution be that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of SEAC and appoint Mrs., uh, Ms. Laura Thompson as an alternate representative for the Learning Disabilities Association of Halton effective January 15th until, 2015 until November 2018.
Have a mover for that motion, please? Trustee Murray? Seconded. Trustee Quinn, all in favor? So pass. And we have no staff reports this evening. Information items, ten point one, student trustee update. You're on.
So the Student Senate has not met since the last time we had our board meeting, or actually before Christmas was the last time we met, I think. Just to give you an overview, we've got three conferences coming up in 2015 in this term so far. We've got one that is for the Bullying Prevention Gala. We have one that's the kind of diversity one that Chloe's been working on with Mr. Negro. And then we have our leadership conference that we do every year. And so those three are still in the works. We're kind of planning them out as we go along. If you have any questions, we can kind of answer them, but it's all general right now. And what we've got here for you today is, it's, uh, so it's the Castle Board Council, Division of Oxta, the Ontario Student Trustees Association. And what they did is they put on a video this year for Student Voice and their, last year they did the province-wide mass. This is like building off of that. They got a bunch of people to give little tidbits and they said stuff and then they filmed it. You'll see it here. Oh, no. How do I play?
We're from the Ontario Student Trustees Association. Off the A over short.
Each of you watching this video today has a unique opportunity.
Participating in student leadership organizations like the Ontario Student Trustees Association is a great way to gain experience.
Bonjour et bienvenue sur la place de l'inspiration et cette façon de penser à l'entraînement dans nos débuts et de grâce à chacun de vous.
Ontario is the unique place because it provides students with the opportunity to discover their goals, their talents, and their dreams.
Young people like yourselves are responsible for shaping the Canada of tomorrow.
That's what education's all about.
From beginning to end.
Through the education system.
Catholic education specifically.
Combination of experience and education will give each and every one of you a tremendous advantage.
Thanks for watching.
Enjoy the rest of Ontario Catholic students' day.
I hope you enjoy the rest of your day. Keep up the good work.
There we go. And that's the video that they produced this year.
That's excellent. Did you put that together?
Oh, I wish. Can't take credit for that one. Um, that's everything. If there's any questions, we can answer them.
Thank you, Jason. Moving on to ten point two, educational field trips. Uh, Superintendent Overholt, and the chart is on page thirty-five of the hard copy. If anyone has any questions? Seeing none. Move on to ten point three, the budget report from September 2014 to December 31st, 2014. Superintendent McMahon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the, uh, monthly report that we now bring forward until the end of the year. The report indicates that the percentages revenue received and expenditures expended to date compared to the revised budget are within the range we would expect. The report has a schedule on revenues, expenses. Then we show our, um, other provincial grants on appendix B. Those numbers are carried forward to the revenue, uh, the revenue and expense statement. And then we show our enrollment, um, in the appendix C to the enrollments that are currently driving, um, our revenues as well as our, our staffing. And myself or Roxanna would be happy to answer any questions trustees may have.
Trustee Quinn.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. One line that stands out for me in this presentation and when we approved the revised budget in the last meeting was the, the school-generated funds, the twelve million dollar odd line. Can you, uh, let me know how that money is spent and when, when I have been involved in generating funds through the school, I was under the impression on the parent council that the school was spending the money themselves. Does all the money come back to the board and then it's dispersed back through our purchasing program? Do the schools spend the money themselves? And, uh, later, when we see it as, uh, as expenditures, are they broken down into individual, individual line items or are they themselves one line item?
Uh, through you, Madam Chair, to trustee Quinn. Those monies are school-generated funds. They're raised in the school and they're spent in the school. About six or seven years ago, we were required by the Ministry of Education to include the revenues and expenses in our budgeting and accounting. Pardon me. They're kept in a separate accounting system at the schools, but we have to add them to the numbers to, for our overall totals that we report, um, to the ministry.
May I follow up then? So do we report the individual items as they are spent, as we would our own expenditures? Or do we just recognize them as one lump sum expenditure of the twelve million dollars? So would, would there be an indication of sports equipment, travel, the kind of things we would raise money for?
Through you, Madam Chair. Those items are tracked by the school, uh, on, in the school's accounting records. Roxanna, did you want to add to, to that?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. They are line items based on activities in each school's account and accounting system. So there are reports generated. The school's websites provide various, um, reporting as well on school generated funds. So it's all managed by the school and we consolidate it at the board level only. This is a budget, so it's an estimate based on the previous year where we expect them to see the activities for all of the schools together.
Chair, if I may add, Roxanna, we don't, to fully answer trustee Quinn's question, we don't, we show the budgeted amounts here of revenue expenditures. We don't report on the actual expenses until the year end when we get the reports in from the school. So Rox, as Roxanna said, these are budgeted numbers at this point. That's why they're rounded to twelve point two million.
Any further questions or comments? No? Yes, sorry. Trustee Carabella.
Yeah, I'm not sure what, where it is now on, on this, but it talks about municipal taxes. And I just want to understand that better. Does that change each year? And, yeah, thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, it does. Uh, it, uh, the municipal taxes we collect from the, from both residential and commercial from the four municipalities. The residential portion is based on, obviously, the, the owners directing their taxes to our board. The commercial taxes are split based on enrollment at, uh, numbers established by the Ministry of Education. What happens in the funding is that we collect those monies from the municipalities and the province pays us the difference between what our overall provincial allocation is. So for lack of better numbers, if it was two hundred million dollars and we collected seventy million in property taxes, a hundred and thirty would come from the province. If the seventy went down to sixty, we would get a hundred and forty million from the province. So that changed in nineteen ninety-eight where we know school boards no longer have a mill rate like municipalities do. But whatever, if, if our tax amount from the four municipalities goes up or down, the provincial government makes up the difference.
Just to follow up on that, just during the election, you know, where people, um, weren't aware that their taxes were going to the English Catholic Board, is there any way we can promote that or find ways to, uh, encourage people to check their taxes and sign up and then that would boost our, um, portion?
Through you, Madam Chair. We, we do have a direction of school support form available on our website. When, when new students come in, uh, to our, to our region, uh, any of the municipalities, the, the, uh, when they, when they enroll in the schools, uh, they are provided with the, the ability to fill in that form. Unfortunately, the, the whole management of the municipal property assessment is with MPAK, the Municipal Property Assessment Corp., which is a crown corporation of the province of Ontario. But any chance we do get to, to rate from the, at the school level or if we come across them, we, we do encourage people to fill them in and may, or at least check to make sure that if their, if their students are enrolled in our system, then indeed they are directing their taxes. The, the only thing that that affects now, could affect, is, uh, the number of trustees we have around the horseshoe. It, it did happen, uh, the election, I believe in, I'm losing the track of the years here, but two thousand and six, I believe, we moved from eight to nine because we crossed over a threshold in terms of number of electors in our, in our, for our board. And that was a hundred thousand threshold that they call a PEG, Population Electoral Group. We're currently at about a hundred and fifteen thousand and I believe the next threshold is a hundred and fifty thousand. So we'd have a long way to go. But that's about the only area where, um, it would affect our board. It doesn't affect our funding. I, I understand, through you, Madam Chair, what trustee Carabella said and certainly we do encourage, um, ratepayers to, to check their taxes and, and switch where, where we come in contact with them in that regard.
Director Dawson.
Perhaps, through you, Madam Chair, through trustee Carabella's concern, perhaps we might be able to put a little blurb on your, your newsletters that haven't gone out yet for parents to check their, uh, their designation. And, um, there's no reason why we couldn't do that. So I present that to you, Madam Chair.
Trustee Rowe.
I'd also mention that, that, that is one of the objectives of the, of the FACE program. And perhaps maybe one of the superintendents could speak to that and what's involved with, uh, encouraging, uh, um, the, particularly the elementary, um, parent councils to look at that.
Director Dawson.
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair. We're about to strike the FACE committee again and that could be one of our, our initiatives that we, we outreach to parents to inform them about that.
Just to follow up, it's not only parents, but it's so many ratepayers to reach the broader public.
Anything further? We have the capital project report. Superintendent McMahon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, this is a report that we bring forward every month on the capital project spending. The report is very similar to the one we presented at the last board meeting. The active projects have a separate page within the, within the report and, uh, we have a summary at the beginning and then we also show our education development charges, our, uh, spending, the, the, sorry, our site purchases, which are funded by education development charges. The last line of the report does indicate that we have been approved for the one point nine million, um, uh, debenture issue, pardon me, in March through the Ontario Financing Authority, um, which I believe will be the last one for us, Roxanna, right? So after this time, uh, all of the capital dollar flows to our board will be, uh, dollar for dollar, two, two times a year, basically. We, uh, we actually get the money flows to us, uh, from, from the ministry and, and they bridge finance, uh, in between those two, those two points. So, um, and again, Roxanna and I'd be happy to answer any questions, trustees.
Trustee Quinn.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I'm looking at the professional fees for almost all of the, the capital projects and they seem to come in about ten percent for every project. Are we, uh, can you explain to me what those professional fees generally are and how we look for cost savings for those, those line items?
I'll, I'll ask trustee, trustee, sorry. Superintendent Kibaj, I have a cold and I'm not fully functioning, so.
Through you, Madam Chair. Trustee Quinn. Professional fees are approximately ten percent, sometimes less than that, but they include a number of, uh, professional services we acquire, whether it be architects, engineers, inspectors, surveyors of that nature. What we do is we generally have a process where we select those architects for the projects and, um, that's, that's our purchasing policy. And the, the engineers are, are, come with the architects as a team. And the surveyors and the inspectors are, are generally professionals that we use ourselves with. Ten percent is a rough, it's actually less than ten percent overall, but, uh, when you throw in a number of other items, it, it may creep up a bit. So there's nothing on what, a lot of negotiators.
Anything further? Response to delegation from Frank Clegg of C4ST. Superintendent McMahon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What we've tried to do in the report was respond to the four items that, uh, the delegation asked us to look at. We've, we've cited, um, sources from both the region's health department, or sorry, the region's health department, um, the, the Ontario government and the federal government. And based on the most current research, as the conclusion indicates, there is no evidence that wireless technology currently being used in our schools presents a health risk. And, uh, so Erica, Kim, and Wayne are here. They helped, uh, write this report or did most of the writing of this report. So be, myself or them would be happy to answer any question. any questions trustees may have.
Any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much for your report. 10.6 Council Administrators of Special Education. Superintendent Brown?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I present this report to share information with the Board of Trustees about one of our staff members traveled to the Council of Administrators of Special Education Conference in San Antonio, Texas. We at Halton Catholic are proud to promote Catholic education throughout the province internationally through our work in special education and we encourage our shared commitment to excellence in Catholic education through our participation in organizations such as CASE. The Council of Administrators of Special Education is a professional education organization. It's affiliated with the Council for Exceptional Children. I sit on the Board of Directors as well as Mrs. Karen McCarthy for the Ontario Council of Administrators of Special Education. And we are really very proud to have Mrs. Karen McCarthy, one of our special education consultants, travel to the CASE conference to represent Halton Catholic and the Ontario Council of Administrators of Special Education. So I present this report to the Board as an info item about Mrs. McCarthy's trip to the CASE conference.
Any questions for Superintendent Brown? Seeing none. 10.7 International Student Program in Miami, Florida. Superintendent Cipriano?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And through you, Madam Chair, I present an information report outlining my recent visit to the ISIF, the International Conference for Educational Affairs in North America that took place in Miami from December 7th to December 10th, 2014. The workshop held 335 U.S. and Canadian educational institutions and 346 international education agencies from 66 different countries, including our board. There were four other Ontario school districts, publicly funded school districts, at the ISIF conference. The ISIF North America workshop is solely for school districts, private schools, colleges, universities, language schools that reside in North America only. It is the largest workshop of its kind in North America and is only, it's second in size only to the World ISIF Conference that takes place in Germany. During the four days, we were able to meet with 35 different agencies from Brazil, Colombia, Mexico, Vietnam, China, South Korea and Ukraine. In fact, we often refer to these types of conferences as speed dating, where someone from the school district or the institution meets for 30 minutes at a time with an agency and you, it's truly a, where it's, it's an opportunity to exchange information, share information, share about our school district. They share some information about the agency. And then you determine from those initial contacts whether you think there's something to, for a relationship going forward in working with this agency from that type of, from that part of the world. All the agencies that do attend ISIF have to pass a strict selection and screening process from ISIF to ensure that they, their mandate is for safe educational travel for their students. It's based on past performance. And since my return, our international education team has followed up with all the agencies and we have begun the process of developing relationships, agreements. And in fact, we've also started accepting students for the 2015, 2016 school year and registering students for the upcoming September school year. To give you some context, typically in January, we have new international students, anywhere approximately between zero and three or four new students registered for September at this time of year. I'd like to hope, I'd like to think that part of our more aggressive strategy, as of yesterday, we have 23 accepted and registered students for, new students for September, an increase of over 500% from what we normally would be at this time of year. In speaking to our international recruiting team that we do have, we anticipate based on the new registrations, based on the agreements that we have with, with new agreements with new agencies, especially in South America, we're anticipating a very modest guess of approximately 100 international students for September, which would be an increase of 50 over our normal international student rate. We typically, over the last 10 years, have averaged just under 50 international students. Our meeting at ISIF, we're intentional in targeting certain areas and regions around the world, South America, Mexico, Southeast Asia, twofold. One, it, the diversity of international students, as I've mentioned several times, really enriches the experience of our own students. And from a business perspective, it also diversifies our exposure to certain countries in those times where certain areas, for whatever reason, might close off their borders to international travel. So it's got a dual positive effect, both for our own students and then, of course, for our own exposure as a board. I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the ISIF conference or international education in general.
I just have a comment. I think that's a remarkable increase. Fabulous. Are you still the only recruiter?
Yes, when I speak about team, there is an I in this team. It's actually, I lie. I do have a few individuals from Mr. McMahon's office, Corinne Lauren, who does incredible work with our agencies in gathering and sharing information and also in, in meeting with families. Oftentimes, we see Corinne in our, in our front foyer, meeting with families from all around the world and she just, she's, she's probably the best person in that role to be the first face, first contact for these families from around the world.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella?
That's wonderful. I was just wondering, what is the revenue impact of having foreign students, international students? Thank you.
Currently, we have, our tuition, which has been the same for, for as long as I can remember, is $13,000 yearly for an international student. There are also some application fees that are somewhat, a small percentage of that. I believe it's $250 application fee. That's the tuition only. We work with home state providers, third-party home state providers, Canada Home State, which is, which provides the homes for students across the country. So there is an additional cost to students who do come to Canada, but those revenues don't come through the board. We collect the tuition fees.
Trustee Quinn?
Through you, Madam Chair. Are these students given the same funding from the province as other students would be in our board? And what are the requirements by way of Catholic education or religious affiliation when students are coming into our board, particularly for elementary students?
Through you, Madam Chair. Regarding the funding from the ministry, Mr. McMahon can maybe help me out here, but I believe we do not receive funding from the ministry. That 13,000 tuition fee is in lieu of the funding formula that we typically get for Canadian, Ontario-based students. Regarding the baptismal certificate, for students to register in our schools, whether they're international or homeschool students, sorry, Ontario-based students, they need to meet the same requirements that are, that Ontario students need to meet. So we do have five elementary students, international students in our schools, and they all would need to meet that requirement with a baptismal certificate for themselves or a parent. In secondary schools, we don't have that same as we, you know, they do, are open, as our open access students are open to our secondary schools. And in, part of our strategy into going to South America and Mexico is we, our director, Mrs. Dawson, Ms. Dawson, myself and our team realized that the Catholic education system is, is a desirable education system in countries where the majority of families are Catholic, Christian-based. And in fact, I've realized that in my travels, it's often a selling point for those families. It's definitely a pull factor for them when they're comparing different school districts from within Canada, within Ontario and in North America.
Through you, Madam Chair. So what is the end goal of this education strategy? Is it to, to fill in spaces where we think we will not be able to fill in with growth in our board? And can you give me an estimate of what would be a successful education strategy, international education strategy in the next five years? Are we looking to, to create more than $130,000 in income? Are we looking at a much larger picture?
Sure. Through you, Madam Chair. The, it would be, it's 1.3 million in revenues, the 100 students. And the goal, we've often talked about supporting declining enrollment in some of our secondary schools. We do this at a time when we are yet, are not yet suffering declining enrollment as a system. I know that there are many boards across the province that have declining enrollment and they've, and they've got into international education precisely for that purpose as they're declining. We see it more as both beneficial, as I've mentioned, to our own students, to our own schools. And at the same time, obviously, in a way to support some of our declining enrollment schools, to support programs in those schools that rely on larger enrollments. If you're asking me for an ideal number, I know that Mr. McMahon and myself and Mrs. Dawson have often talked about, we're hoping to triple, quadruple our original average, 50 to, and we thought that would be a good balance between the needs of our system and what we could manage as a system based on our staffing.
Any further questions? Trustee Insatzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one quickly. I'm just wondering, the students that we are getting internationally, are we targeting certain areas or certain schools for these students to attend or are they sort of scattered throughout the system?
We do tend to try and direct them to certain schools in our system that, that may be experiencing declining enrollment. Unfortunately, there are times when we don't, we cannot, because of home state providers, if, for example, the home state provider cannot find a location in that area of a family that can take in those students, we are somewhat tied to providing them the secondary school that the home state provider resides in. But we do our very best to try and, and direct them towards those schools. Currently, the majority of our students that are international students this year are going to schools in Oakville. Laola is our, is our largest intake for international students, followed by St. Thomas Aquinas and Holy Trinity. In Burlington, assumption is our largest intake of international students. And we're trying to, realizing the declining enrollment in Burlington, we are trying to direct more students to Burlington. In working with our home state providers, we've, we've found that Burlington has less home state places for students. So it's, it will be a challenge to try and recruit, to help recruit home state providers in Burlington so we can support those schools as well.
Thank you very much. Very educational report. 10.8 Georgetown Elementary School Boundary Review. Superintendent Overholt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And through you. The report before trustees is an information on, I guess, the reinitiation of the Georgetown Elementary School Boundary Review process that was previously approved at the June 18th, 2013 board meeting. A little bit of background information, on June 4th of that year, a staff report was presented to the Board of Trustees outlining the need for a Georgetown boundary review for elementary schools, based in part on our board's school capital priority project, projects at the time. And one of the capital priority projects was a replacement school for Holy Cross. And also, which would help provide additional capacity to accommodate the existing students in Portables in Georgetown. On the 18th, as mentioned above, the board passed a resolution and directed staff to initiate a school attendance boundary review process for Georgetown elementary schools. Subsequently, that proposed replacement school was not approved by the ministry. And along with some other pressing needs in regards to initiating another school attendance review process for Milton, the Georgetown Boundary Review was temporarily put on hold. However, with the continual accommodation pressures and projected growth in Georgetown, the need for this process to take place is evident. And so staff will follow operating policy 129, which outlines the process and the, again, the significant input and participation by school communities on a wide range of potential boundary options. We will certainly be conducting the process, which will be one that is fair, open and transparent. And initiating at this point in time, we will be able to have school communities identify individuals that will be part of the committee to start the process in February of this year. And our hope is that we can come to a completion where we can bring it back to the board by June of this year, which ultimately will be able to put new boundaries in place by September 2016. We certainly will bring updates to the board periodically throughout the process. Be happy to receive any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Superintendent Overholt? Trustee Rowe?
Just a comment, Madam Chair. While I haven't given up on replacement school for Holy Cross, I applaud the rationalization of the boundaries and consolidation of boundaries based on the growth that Georgetown's experienced so far before they add 20,000 more people into the, into the mix. So I think it's timely. Thank you.
Trustee Danko?
Madam Chair, so we're just rebalancing the, the population of students among the existing schools as best we can. Is that the whole point of the review?
Superintendent Overholt?
Through you, Madam Chair. At this point in time, we are looking at realigning some of the areas. When we look at where some of our students are attending schools, certainly a realignment of those boundaries is required. We do know, and I guess through our business and our planning department can, can speak a little bit more to it, we do know that there is going to be, as trustee Rowe has mentioned, a big area of growth over the next, depending on who you talk to, probably four to five years, that there will be a significant number of housing taking place. So we have, I think, planned for that area down the road, but right now it's the existing population that we're looking at.
Anything further? Trustee Danko?
So the forecast then is for a school to be approved at some point in the future?
Superintendent Overholt? Trustee Rowe?
Through you, Madam Chair. And again, other, other superintendents can pipe in. We certainly do anticipate, there is areas where we, we do anticipate new growth in schools to be built, but we just don't know at what point in time.
Madam Chair, if I may, just to, to follow up on what Superintendent Overholt just said, we will need another school or two, perhaps, with respect to vision Georgetown that trustee Rowe has referred to. It's not a question of whether we'll need another school or two, it's where we would locate that school or schools.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, move on to miscellaneous information. And we have the SEAC minutes of November 24th. Superintendent Brown?
I present the SEAC minutes from the November 24th meeting. I would like to ask that the trustees approve them with an amendment that there is a member absent, noted as Alessanne Lemay. I'd like to ask that the trustees pass the minutes with the removal of Alessanne's name from the members' excuse.
Everyone in favor of that? Yes. CPIC minutes of December 1st. Superintendent Overholt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The minutes are there before trustees. Any questions to those minutes? I'd be happy to answer them.
Trustee Quinn?
Just a comment. I see that former trustee Lemay has been named as the community representative on CPIC. I want to congratulate the board on making that decision.
Any other questions, comments? Policy Committee meeting minutes, excuse me, of December 9th. Superintendent Cipriano?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. The policy committee meeting from December, December policy meeting are for you, for your information. I'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
Any questions? We have another item just added to the agenda. Good news shared by Director Dawson.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. Just an update, trustees-
Just an update, trustees, I received a personal invitation from Premier Wynn late this afternoon to meet with her this Thursday from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. And the purpose of her, she invited a few directors, as we're going to be in Toronto at a conference, and I think she looked at the schedule and knew I had an hour that I could come down to Queens Park and have a discussion with her on the implementation of equity and inclusive school policies and the Accepting Schools Act. And she's looking for what we're doing in our board and how we can work together to develop strategies and solutions to ensure that our students are safe and supported. And I'd be pleased to bring back a report to trustees at the next board meeting on that experience.
That would be great. Thank you. We have attached three pieces of correspondence, one from OOPC congratulating the newly elected trustees, explaining what they do, and Eddie McDonald being their representative. Two, the letter to Halton Regional Health that went out, signed by myself, and a letter from Kelly Amis, the Chair of the Board of the HDSP, about a report initiated by unanimous decision in their board for high school start times. If anyone has any questions or comments, Trustee Danko and then Trustee Intomasi.
Madam Chair, regarding item 12.2, the letter to the Regional Health Department, is there a report or a document anywhere in our system that summarizes all of the work that the Health Unit does with the school board?
Director Dawson is speaking with Elizabeth Bowers of the Ministry regarding our agreement with the Regional Health Department, and it will take some time for them to uncover that and submit it back to us, but our agreement allowing the region of, the Halton Regional Health Department to come into our schools, basically for convenience, for parents' sakes, because it would be during the school day, and that would alleviate them having to scramble for those vaccinations that are required for school in kindergarten and I believe in grade 10. But as for a report, I would have to ask Director Dawson that question.
I'm just wondering, through you, Madam Chair, Trustee Danko, you're, I ask you asking, is there like a reciprocal agreement? Is that what you're asking? Yes. Well, I just received, and I'm getting updated this week, that Council of Ontario Directors of Education, also called CODE, have struck a committee with the Medical Officers of Health for Ontario, and they're coming together to develop just such an agreement. So that is in the works. They just began the meetings, and I will keep trustees updated on those kinds of partnership agreements that come forward between school boards and the regional health departments.
Further?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I wasn't aware of a reciprocal agreement being developed, so if that could come forward as an information item as soon as possible. But what I was, I mean, what I was looking for, if, maybe this agreement will do that, but just a comprehensive overview of what the Health Unit does for us, everything from, I mean, I think we've discussed head lice already. So that and among all the other things that the Health Unit does for us.
And Dr. McGinnis has responded, saying that she will get back to us in response to our letter, but they've been inundated with the flu epidemic right now. Any other questions on the other two pieces of correspondence? Yes, I'm sorry, Trustee Intomasi and then Trustee Quinn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just curious with this, the motion that the, our Co-Terminus Board has put forward, and I'm just wondering, just generally, if perhaps Superintendent McMahon has any comments? And I'm looking at these times, my concern goes to not just the day, and I appreciate the teenagers need extra sleep, I, you know, I used to have one. So I know, I know what that means, but my concern is, how would this impact on, you know, after-school activities, jobs, that sort of thing for students? Whether, you know, pushing that time back. I understand it's not a huge amount of time, but it could be, I think, it could really impact some individuals or maybe us as a whole. So I was just wondering if there were any general thoughts on that moving forward.
Through you, Madam Chair. To the Vice Chair, yes, we do have some concerns. I share the ones you just mentioned, among others, cost would be another. Efficiencies that we've gained in the system would be another, if they tried to do this and we ended up putting more buses on the road, which leads to another concern, which is drivers, and there is a driver shortage. So the, we are in a consortium, as trustees are aware, and the General Manager has outlined her concerns and some parameters that she would need to do in order to conduct such a study. They did mention this at our last Board of Directors meeting, sorry, two Board of Directors meeting ago for HSTS in October, and they said that if they did go forward, that we would, they would have to live within the, or they would have to make sure that none of the costs were passed on to us, that they would bear the cost of this, and that they would have to address all of the parameters, and there are a number of them. So I didn't see that. I'm sure Director Dawson did not see it manifesting itself in a board motion, so, of the other board, but it has. It's happened before. We don't control that board, neither do you, so, as a board. So I can assure you, it will be a topic of discussion at our next HSTS Board of Directors meeting, which I think is upcoming, Paul, in the not-too-distant future, yeah. And we will definitely get back to the board, but I think, I don't think much will have gone on between now and then, so, thank you.
If anybody wants, hasn't seen the article in Inside Halton about their unanimous motion, it's here. Any other questions? Trustee Carabella?
I don't have a question, but more of a comment regarding their request, because it seemed like it was just 30 minutes later that the school day would start. And what about, you know, just going to bed 30 minutes earlier? You know? Save a lot of trouble for a lot. All in favor? But, you know, maybe that's something to consider, the healthy sleep habits, a little information for parents or ideas on, you know, shutting the electronics off and things like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. Anything further? Seeing nothing else, we have no questions. We don't have to return in camera. We do have to approve a motion to excuse Chloe, who sent her late regrets, personal school issues. Trustee Quinn, seconded. Trustee Mariah, all in favor of excusing Chloe? Passed. And a motion for adjournment, please. Trustee Rowe, seconded by Trustee Quinn, all in favor. Done. And our closing prayer is Trustee Carabella. Thank you.
Please join me in prayer. Name the Father, Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Lord, we continually look to you for your guidance. To you for your guidance. Holy Spirit, let us find you everywhere, especially in our hearts and mind and on our lips. God our Father, you know why we are here. Let us do your will. Our Lady, you are always with us. May we invoke your aid. Amen.